I call the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for November 15, 2022. The time is now six o'clock. Please, Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the invitation?
Sure. Thank the Lord, you have me. Get over it. Thank you for this day. Thank you for the citizens of Edna that are here. Thank you for giving us our freedoms. Thank you for giving those that give their lives for our freedoms, as we recognize, are better than today. Be with those families that miss their loved ones and be with us tonight for our meeting. Amen.
Please, for your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Roll call, please, Ms. Varian.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. McKee.
Here. I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I had requested one item be placed on the agenda and it wasn't. This was previously attempted back on 9-1, but it was blocked at the JEDZI meeting. And the liaison was chosen as the chair, so I could not present again. And we have the upcoming meeting this Friday. And then the chair also appointed herself to that board. So I think it's incumbent that we can discuss this tonight. For purchases that are needed by our road crew to serve the businesses and residents of township, why would we not ask and seek from the JEDZI board to pay for the items as they've done in the past and save us money? So I've moved to amend the agenda to add, under Old Business Discussion and Request to Purchase Needed Road Department Equipment and Presentation to the JEDZI Two Board at the November 18 meeting for requests for reimbursement. Point of order, Madam Chair. Since the chair will not respond, I think it's the chair's duty to call for a second.
Die for lack of second.
Point of order, the second was not called for. Sorry, folks. And further discussion on this, I find it appalling that this board will not support our township employees for the new equipment they need to serve this township, perform their duties, to not even discuss it. Again, as I said, the chairperson blocked the attempt on 9-1. Mr. Carlyle self-appointed herself as the sole liaison to the board and then self-appointed herself to that same board. And it's dumbfounded why we can't even have a discussion on this.
Die for lack of second. Call for the question. Roll call.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Adoption of minutes. I move to adopt the minutes from the October 4 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, the minutes do not equally reflect the business of the board and do not abide by Robert's Rules 48-4, Part 6, regarding conclusion of motions made. If approved, I would ask, if approved, I would ask the fiscal officer to not certify them or have certified to include an addendum stating the motions made to correctly reflect the board, the business of the board. And I would also like to ask why the minutes are so lagging. They should be presented at the next meeting. We have approximately two months between duties from the secretary, no longer include public records requests, and also the secretary is present at these meetings taking notes, taking minutes. So if anything, the minutes should be produced quicker. So I think it's our duty to present these at the next meeting.
Die for lack of second.
Point of order, there was no motion made.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans.
No.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Ms. McKee.
Other comments are limited to three minutes per person. Please come up to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, please.
Steve Perkins, 7352 Palmer Road. Man, where to start? So I'm glad that the board invokes Robert's Rules. It'd just be great if anybody knew what they were. So I'm going to read something here that I think is pertinent. A couple of them, actually. How to create a dysfunctional board. Number one, nobody knows what the rules are. Number two, you can't follow rules when you don't know what they are. Number three, members violate rules designated to protect the rights of other members. Number four, members get their rights trampled on. Number five, members build animosity towards the member that didn't respect the rights or followed decorum. Number six, meetings devolve into shouting matches. Number seven, members start to assign motives to other members of the board. Number eight, political supporters of each team join in and pile on. Number nine, their supporters don't know the rules either. Number 10, members then begin to vote against each other's personalities rather than their emotions. Number 11, allegations of incorrect priority are thrown around like candy at a parade. Number 12, the public joins in. Does that sound accurate to what is going on in this board? Regardless, I don't think that the business of this township is being properly served. Now, one of the things that comes up in the last meeting, I actually went through the entire video and put timestamps of what should have been done at different points in the meeting. One thing that also came to point this week because of national elections, I don't know if you realized it or not, but there's absolutely no obligation, even in Congress, for the Speaker of the House to be a member of Congress. They can literally go to anybody. Now, I'm just going to point it out there that if the members of this board are not capable of handling and presiding over a meeting the way they should, they can find somebody outside of the board who can do it for them. I'm just going to put it right out there. Now, the great thing is, as you can see, I've got my own copy of Robert's Rules. If anybody would like my Post-it notes of where I've got marks made and how it relates to this board, I'd be happy to supply them. I've had great conversations with two out of three trustees this week. I would like to have a conversation with the third about this. Because the first thing that happens in a meeting is a call to order. We've already been out of order three times in this meeting. It's not acceptable, and it's nothing more than members of this board attacking other members of the board. There's not a single source of that. There's plenty to go around. But regardless, you're here to serve this community, not your own personal pettiness on this board. Get over it. Be adult.
Judy Kathmeyer, 29 Roma Court. Anger, frustration, disappointment, sadness, betrayal, embarrassment, disillusionment, those are just some of the emotions that I've been feeling over the past weeks relating to Edna Township. I'm angry and disappointed that two-thirds of our elected officials seem to be ignoring the concerns of the residents. Every first and third Tuesday, citizens appear before the trustees to address problems, concerns, and conflicts that are interfering with their quality of life and enjoyment of their properties. I'm angry and thoroughly frustrated that although citizens present their issues to this forum, they're hardly discussed and rarely solved. Unless these citizens keep pounding the points at each meeting, their concerns fall into the mysterious black hole, never surface again. Why are elected officials ignoring the constituents that voted them into this position? It's disgraceful and a dereliction of duty. At last week's Citizens Advisory Committee Betrayal and Disappointment serviced, as I became aware that Edna Township was invited to be involved in important discussions concerning Lincoln County Intel and the infrastructure changes associated with this massive expansion that will directly impact us. Who received that invitation and why was there no response from Edna Township? Edna Township trustees are elected to represent the interests of Edna Township residents. It is not for you to decide if we are worthy of your representation. It's what the voters trusted you to do. Be our voice, protect our interests, and represent us. We have a zoning commission that has not met for the last three, four months. How is that possible with everything that's happening in and around Edna Township? Then we have township meetings that are an embarrassment because projects are approved, services are rendered, and payment is withheld for whatever reason. Who would want to do business in this township if business owners have to sue to receive payment for their services? For 47 years, I've never considered living anywhere else but Edna Township. But now, surrounded by cement bopses, insufficient infrastructure, certain-to-be tax increases, and the distinct possibility that Remersburg could extend its tentacles deeper to this area, that option is now open. Our quaint, beloved township is slipping away, and I don't think you care. And that's the part that has me sad and disillusioned.
I don't have my phone, but as per your agenda item for new business, Burlington County, I'm very answering questions you might have.
Yeah. You've got your statement here. What do you just say to the mic, please?
My address, please.
My personal address or business address?
Business, if I want to.
Okay. Burlington County, Alexis Spitz Simmons, Executive Director. Address is 20 South Second Street, New York, Ohio, 43055. Just here and support to answer questions that you may have regarding your new business item A on the agenda.
Phil Black, 13398 Palmer Road. I wanted to address, sure, it sounds like pie on non, maybe with some of the stuff going on, but I've noticed and tonight I concur again, that there's a refusal to second a motion, which sounds, as a citizen, to be a legitimate item for debate. And it would appear to me that the decision to not second a motion is being used as a tool in a negative way, inappropriate for proper rule of order. The purpose of a second is not to approve of any particular item. The purpose of a second is to open up a discussion. If one is refusing to discuss a particular topic, that implies that there's some hidden agenda, something that somebody doesn't want to expose, that there's something, you know, that's being withheld from the citizen. Last week, as an example, there was a motion for $254,000 to apply for a grant for roadways. There was not a second. There was a little bit of pushback from the audience. The comment I heard was, "There's more to the story." That's the whole point. There is more to the story. That's the reason you have a second. That's the reason you have a discussion. It then becomes your option to approve or disapprove the motion. I don't feel it should be your option to not at least discuss a legitimate item being brought before this board. Now, in regard to that $254,000, I figured it out. And so I would expect that each one of the three trustees should submit a personal check for $84,666.67 to the financial officer in lieu of that grant. I think that would be most appropriate.
Ryan Davis, 8807 Watkins Road. I concur with the last gentleman, to not even discuss a grant, which is free money, when we're arguing over less than $2,500 for roads for our residents. I'm at loss. To take up the rest of my time, I'm going to 100% focus in on the topic that no one will discuss with me, or not everyone will discuss with me after the meeting. The missing server for the cameras. I specifically asked. Ms. Varian does not know where it's at. Mr. Evans does not know where it's at. I think you said you didn't know where it was at. That's what I heard after the meeting. I asked Ms. McKee. She just chose not to answer one way or the other. And Mr. Vance said that's not his area. Let's get that on the record, that no one has spoken to where it's at. Okay? Second, there was a motion two months ago about pictures on the wall. That server is mounted on the wall. I say they're out of order with the board, but I'm going to go a step further. I think these people up here that we elected need to tell us where it's at tonight, either after I'm done talking or during their trustee comments. And here's why. Because all we can assume is it's theft. If nobody knows where it's at, it's stolen. If it's stolen, it needs replaced. That is going to be a felony, because I guarantee it's over $1,000. I need some urgency on something that's urgent to more than just me. I'm just going to be the one to speak up and say that if this is not spoken of and communicated, so the newspaper can get the whole story that Mr. Evans' eight questions did not get answered, that were valid questions, didn't even answer one of them, about where the server was at, that I'm going to assume it's theft. And I'm glad the sheriff's deputy is here tonight. That's all I'm going to say. But I think if you don't speak up after the meeting, you're denying you know where it's at, or you don't know where it's at, and we need to report a crime immediately.
More public comments?
Steve Sly, 1372 Londondale Parkway, Newark.
Would you pre-trad address, please?
I just said it, 1372 Londondale Parkway, Newark.
Thank you. I didn't hear you.
So I'm here because I don't really have a horse in this race, because I don't live in here any longer. But I have friends that live out here, people I've known when I was a kid out here, went to school out here, circled on the school board out here, friends of mine with past trustees out here. I'm not talking about the last board. I'm talking about people that go back to before. A lot of you were even in the community, Jeff Field Melon. And we're talking about Terry Davens, Dan Bravard, Kenny Jackson, Paul George, you know, Gary Burkholder, you know, all the past trustees. I think, Paul George was a good friend of mine. You know, he poured his heart and soul into Edna Township. If he was alive today, he would be, he would think that this is a disgrace, watching what this board has done to Edna Township, the leadership of the board, of what they've done to Edna Township. It just, you know, it's an ongoing thing every month. Nothing changes. You know, I like Mr. Vance, but I'm still trying to understand, at $67,000 now, what it is if your job is here, except to tell, you know, Ms. McKee, what to say during the meeting. You know, I do a public records request. I get responses back. No records exist, but records do exist. I have proof that they're set to me that records exist, but I get emails saying records don't exist. And that's just a little part of what's going on. So I'm just here tonight, I guess, to speak up for those people that used to be a part of this township that are no longer with us, to just say that this is a disgrace.
John Gennar, 10785 Palmer Road. My question and statement tonight is, has to do with financing in the township. You know, Edna Township is not a business. They don't have money. They get it from the taxpayers. We used to get a finance report, and we, in that report, we got withdrawals and deposits in the account and a balance at the end. I don't think since the transition that happened that we have heard a balance in our financial report on record, that I've heard. Last one I heard is like $5 million, which is not a small amount of money. Sounds pretty impressive to me. But my bigger concern is that if I understand it right, each trustee has a credit card that they carry around on their persons. That gives them the right to spend $2,500 a month. If I'm wrong, I can be corrected, but I think that's what I hear. We hear it every, almost every meeting, that I've got $2,500 that I can spend on emergencies. And as long as I have a private meeting, I can use that money to get my materials together for my meeting, which is not a trustee event or a township event. So, you know, I have over 30 years' experience in healthcare. I've worked for successful businesses. We never had that kind of leeway to spend that kind of money for a manager, a supervisor, department head. You had to get approval. That credit card should be kept in the office, under lock and key, and when you need to use it, you come in, you sign it out, and when you bring it back, you bring it back with the receipt of what items you have purchased. That should all be approved by the three of you. So that's my concern, that there's money being spent, township money being spent, that is not accountable or not, you know, not efficient. So since you're spending our money, I think it'd be nice if we knew where it was going. And not just because we passed this thing that said that I've got $2,500 that I can spend each month, so leave me alone. I think that should be reduced to $500 or less, and that credit card should not be carried on any personal person. That should be lock and key with the office manager or whatever title you want to give her. But that, that needs to be controlled and need to be documented and tracked. That's my report. Thank you.
Mr. Reddick.
We can address it during here.
Thank you.
Those are the ones I've written here.
You give them to me or just?
I'm giving it to you as an extra, but it's, it's an extra.
Oh, okay.
This is what I report from Watkins.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Gary Burkholder, 254 Trail East.
Tonight, I'm going to give a report on the Schannell project, which has been an ongoing concern, and that is the Schannell FedEx project out there on Tollgate Road. On November 2 of this year, I went out and participated in that walkthrough. Present at that walkthrough were representatives from Lincoln County Planning Department, also from the Lincoln County Engineers Office, also Soil and Water, and Mr. Dan Harrington, representing Schannell. There was a lot of discussion. I followed up this following week with Lincoln County Planning Department, and currently they're requesting additional as-built plans because there's some confusion as to what was originally proposed and what was actually built. What was good, and also present at that walkthrough, were two of the residents that are affected by the flooding back there. What was discovered and confirmed is that the underground ditch that runs from Lynn's Road west towards the Schannell property, that was supposed to be connected to the drainage system on the Schannell property, and it was not. So that is an item that is going to have to be rectified. There was also discussion, and Mr. Harrington said, "No, he never agreed to," but there was a discussion that the residents said at that walkthrough that the, there was supposed to be a connection from the catch basins into their properties. And so I want to also put into the record that on Monday, April 19, Mr. John Carlyle, former board member, sent an email to one of the residents affected by the problems with the stormwater out there, and I quote, "These catch basins will have a pipe extension to every resident on Lynn's Road. I asked the drainage engineer on the project to include this as if it was not on the original drawings." So we're finding out that a lot of promises were made, and if anyone wants to research this more, go back to the minutes of September 9, 2020. There was a very extensive discussion, you were there, Jeff, regarding the buffering, the stormwater, the lighting, and the noise. To date, the lighting and the noise have not been addressed. And it concerns me when we have an email come out just on November 1 from our consultant who advises the citizens that any addressing of the wall is really dependent upon the second building being built. And I think that's just bad practice, that we're not going to address that sooner rather than later. There are also questions regarding the buffering. The buffering was supposed to be in, and I'll give Mr. Carlyle credit, he said it at that September 9 meeting. All that needs to be done before the building starts getting built, and it wasn't.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kate Murch, 37 First Avenue Southwest, Mayflower Edition, Edna. This might be my first in-person meeting, but it is not the only meeting I have attended. I have taken great interest in Edna, because I live here, because my children go to school in the southwest Lincoln School District, and I expect to live here for quite some time. First and foremost, the issue at hand that I am incredibly concerned about is the fact that security servers and cameras can be removed from this building, SD cards and records can be removed. As part of records retention, those need to be within the fiscal officer's reach. The second issue I have is troubling. The fact that we can go to a meeting and say discussion and then be met with silence when someone brings up a point to discuss tells me one thing. There is a meeting going on behind the scenes, and while we may not be able to prove that, we aren't stupid people. We are watching, we are watching, we are listening. We care about this township, which is why we're here. We care about this township, which is why we began to pay attention. I hope you will show us that respect back.
Hi, my name is Lynn. I want to discuss this fiscal officer position that is being interviewed for or whatever being thrown out there, that someone's going to be hired to do this fiscal officer job. That's what I want to discuss. So basically, let's go through this fiscal officer makes about $35,000 a year by the Ohio Revised Code. So that's what, that's what they're making according to that. With a benefit package of OPERS and health insurance, you're looking at fiscal officers costing the township about $50,000 a year total. Now, if you hire someone at $60,000 a year as a fiscal officer assistant and including their OPERS and health insurance, you're looking at about $80,000 to $100,000 a year. This now means the township would have to pay for the fiscal officer responsibility $130,000 to $150,000 a year, with the prior fiscal officer did it for $50,000 a year in the previous. in the previous administration. If the present fiscal officer makes $35,000 a year and spends about 10 hours a week providing that service to the residents of the township, that's about 500 hours a year divided into a $35,000 salary, that would equal about $60 to $70 per hour. Anybody making that? Because I ain't. Then if you add in the opers and the health insurance, you're looking at an additional $15,000 a year more. I also wanted to discuss with you and tell you that I have career development experience professionally, okay, because I hold an advanced degree in business, I have an MBA, and I have taught professional development and career development for 10 years, okay, at college level, okay? I can tell you that by reading that job description and those requirements, they don't match, okay? I can tell you there is no match. You're calling for all of this fiscal experience and all this stuff and that saying, we need someone with a high school degree or equivalent. Guys, it's wrong, okay? Then you go on and say, well, this person should have MS Office experience and things like that. You need somebody that has some numbers background. You need someone with an accounting degree, okay? Someone with some numbers experience, okay, to be a fiscal officer that you want, okay? The new hire, whatever you have going on out there, I'm telling you, those do not match those qualifications, okay? Professionally, I looked at it and I'm like, this is a joke. It's a clown show, guys. This is a clown show, okay? Is it rigged that you're going to hire somebody that only has a high school diploma? Is that what this is about or what? I just want to know. I'm just asking. I'm throwing it out there. I'm looking at this professionally, guys, okay? I'm not a biozo, all right? I spent a lot of years in school, okay? And I know what I'm talking about, okay? From a career development standpoint, professionally, those qualifications are not matching what your job requirement is. We want somebody qualified to do this and this and this, but they can have a high school diploma. What? That's crazy. That's craziness, okay? That's insanity. I don't know who came up with that stuff, but it looks to me like it's rigged, like someone's just going to get the job with a high school diploma and make $65,000 a year. My other question is this, if you hire somebody to do that and help her, what's she going to do? Why do we need her? Guys, answer these questions, okay?
Thank you.
All right? You get the point?
Thank you.
Alicia Zachar, Cumberland Trails. On January 24th, at the special meeting, Julie, Julie Varian, was selected as a fiscal officer for the Edna Township. For those that are not aware, Julie was a financial as well as political supporter for Facebook, on Facebook for Mark Evans during the Roberts Trust Day. I will ask everybody to please watch that special meeting on January 24th. Get YouTube on and get yourself something to eat and watch that. At the end of the meeting, Mark Evans will leave his recorder on after the meeting while everyone's talking socially. And it's quite a bit, probably at least 10 minutes. The meeting, Mark did vote for who it was in the executive session, and they had their meeting, and it was for two hours. Back at the regular session, Vanessa Neekamp, the person who trained Julie, was present, and I'm not sure if she was present in the executive session meeting, but she was the person who applied and wanted the position of administrator, and she trained Julie. And I believe this township paid her probably $3,500, and according to Mark, had input in why you hired her. On February 15th, the meeting, Julie's hired and she's on the board along with the rest of these trustees, and they're talking about the administrator position. Now, you know, it looks like to me, maybe she wanted that administrator position, I can't say what occurred, I just know that that's when she began explaining that she's working with the township officer, Violet Township Vanessa, with regards to the electronic signatures and purchase orders and checks. And she has come to the conclusion that it's the best to have their trustees and electronic signatures on the documents. February 15th meeting is so important. I would recommend everybody, and I mean everybody, watch it. Jeff asks quite a few valid questions, but really, it's not really recognized. But if you go back and you watch that long meeting, and it is long, it will tell you quite a bit about where's our money going, how Jeff wants to see the money, he wants to see what's shown. Later on in this trustee meetings, you revoke your privilege of allowing her to use an electronic signature. I'm pretty sure that that's a problem, and there's a problem for why you're doing it. I don't know what that problem is, but there should be some documentation. That February 15th meeting is something everybody needs to see. A couple of meetings ago, Ross had the due diligence to start checking all of the financials when Mark was getting things paid that he purchased that may not have been approved by the board. That's where she asks for the specifics bills that have been paid. Why do we need another person? I mean, if they're going to pay him $60,000 to $70,000 a year, what do we need her for? I think Laura could have done it, but I don't believe they want Laura to do it because Laura's been doing it this whole time. I'm sure they want to have an agenda, but we didn't have that before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business, Grow Licken County, effective date agreement and renewal. As a president of Edna Township Board of Trustees, I support Grow Licken County 100%. The agreement between Edna Township and Grow Licken County that was signed in 2021 as an automatic renewal unless otherwise terminated. The duration of this agreement continues until either party terminates it by notifying the party at least 90 days before the effective date of termination, which is March 1st, 2023, for the next renewal. The compensation amount is $15,000 for each year the work is provided. I recommend requesting a yearly contract with Grow Licken County. I move to terminate the continues with, and continue Grow Licken County. I also include in this same motion that trustee comment be limited to three minutes upon any second to the motion being received that would allow for discussion per 4315 in the Roberts Rule of Order motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I don't understand why, thank you for starting by three minutes. We can get out of this at any time with 90 days' notice. It ought to renew on itself, so we could cancel 90 days before it ought to renew. We've got a lot of important business to handle for this township, and we're not. It's going into a black hole, it's being ignored, it won't even be discussed, there's conversations happening outside these meetings improperly. We, there's no reason to rescind this and make it a yearly contract. It ought to renew at our option to not renew it. And we could get out of it today in 90 days and terminate it. So what's the point of this business with the board except just busy work and it has no effect? Except number one, showing Grow Licken County and other partners that we might not be committed to it. If we want to stay in it, this contract's fine. If we want to get out of it, we've got 90 days. I would ask, what does this motion and this change change?
Again, it's, it automatically renews every night, every year, and we are wanting to, we have to give them a 90-day notice of termination. So I recommend that we go on a yearly new contract that we would sign yearly, that has come before the board yearly, and then we can renew it at that time. But I recommend us do it that way instead of the 90-day in advance because it automatically renewed. Just fact, when we got started on the board, it automatically renewed and we didn't know it because we were new and we didn't know it. So if we do this year to year, it'd come up yearly so we can, each new person, as the board changes, they can address it. So that's why I was saying we would do the yearly.
And I've addressed this before, and this is part of the dysfunction of the township and the unorganization, that we don't have a master calendar of events of when they come up. And I've been pushing that since I've come in here, and we still don't. And that's what, the lack of organization, the lack of working filings, the lack of, we've got stacks of papers, we, we have a whole room of documents back there that have been back there for years, probably closing on a decade. And to change this document is going to need legal review, so we're going to go up to prosecutor's office maybe with more just work when there's important things.
That's important.
Grow Licken County's times.
It's important, you're right. It's very important.
Why?
I brought it up to the board.
I disagree, and I would ask Alexis with Grow Licken County to comment on that if she has any about the proposed change.
I would just ask, like, I would clarify a question.
Sure, absolutely.
So, you're going to?
Doesn't matter, you're going to get your money here.
I'm sorry, my clarified question is, so you're voting on today to cancel the current contract or to?
No, we want to, we want to continue. Well, the contract that we're in with you, because you got paid what, a month or so ago for $15,000? The contract that we're in with you right now is automatic renewal.
Correct.
That's a part of your contract that we have.
So I'm just trying to understand what your motion is.
We don't want to do an automatic renewal and then do the 30 days, I mean 90 days. Most of the time when you do a contract, and if it is automatic renewal, it's 30 days. We can adjust that to 30 days instead of the 90 days. It will still be the same thing.
Okay, so your motion today would provide notice to us that you would like to
Go a year.
Negotiate your contract.
Correct.
That would agree that.
That's exactly why.
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to clarify so I had a good understanding of what your proposed action is.
That's all.
Can I ask a question too? So if we went to this, would you invoice mon, would you invoice us every year for it still?
Yes.
Or not? So you'd still invoice even if we didn't have a contract, right?
No, if you don't have a contract to provide investment to Grow Licken County.
No, we haven't had a contract.
So.
Well, you wouldn't send us a notice then, saying, hey, your contract, your time is up, would you like to renew? Or would you like to? I mean, how would you do that? How would we know that you, that our time is up?
I would have to put it on my calendar to contact you in December of every year to go through the process.
And it would be a 30-day in advance instead of the 90-day. Because right now you guys have it at 90 days and it automatically renews.
So if you wanted to change it to a 30-day automatic renewal, if you could advise us 30 days ahead of time of automatic renewal.
Right, and that's where most contracts are 30 days instead of 90 days.
You could still have an automatic renewal without having to do the work of negotiating a contract every year if you want to continue, and that maybe would provide you a cushion every year instead of the 90 days.
Right.
But it would still create work on your part as trustees, as well as my part as the executive director, to create a new contract and go through signature processes every year.
That's right.
So we can, we can start next week if you like on the contract that would be renewing in Jan, in March. So, you know, we can, we can go through that process now if you like.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's just what I propose. It's up to the rest of us, it depends on how we vote. Yes or no?
We could add that in an organizational, like we do with the Chamber, Taskler Chamber, Morp C, where they decide in the organizational meeting that this year we want to participate with all these boards, and then we know, I have this mind that it's going to be part of what they want to participate in.
Add to the calendar, but, I mean.
We get to add it every year where we can put the other, like Morp C and Taskler or Chamber, they.
If you're talking about 30 days, right, instead of 90.
Well, she said if it doesn't in March, that you'd be able to make that decision in January, and she would know if you guys want to renew.
Yes.
We get it added in as part of our organizational meeting every year.
Or, as I have suggested, that we just create a master calendar, we run this like a professional organization, just like a homeowner when the renewal comes up for homeowner's insurance, that we're treating this like Netflix, that we want to decide, Ms. Brown, please, I'm speaking.
Well, Mr. Evans, we do have a master calendar, but this gets to.
Ms. Brown, I'm speaking. You're out of order. Point of order, please. Point of order.
You're not a member of this board.
Point of order.
Well, I'm tired of you lying on me.
Point of order.
You have no obligation to meet the board anyway.
I'm speaking. Please.
Your three minutes is up.
Ms. Brown, that is very inappropriate. As I said, we should act like this is a professional organization, we should have master calendars. And that's why when there was no transition, we didn't know what was going on because there was nothing provided, nothing on the calendar. When we get into a new contract or when there's a jet agreement or tip agreement that requires something happen within 24 months, 18 months, six, that should be placed on the calendar available to all so we can plan. If I get hit by a bus and I'm replaced, so the next person comes in and knows what's going on. We don't have that organization here. So I don't understand all this busy work to do nothing. We can cancel it anytime if we don't want to renew it. We should be adults and be able to say 90 days prior, because that's on the calendar, let's cancel it.
Call for the question.
I just want to say that it should be included in discussions about the budget for next year, which is why I brought it up at the last meeting, that we need to decide with all the other things. So I plan to go through that line of my item with you guys, so these won't become unexpected bills like they were this year.
Because Walter Robbins did not do that. Perfect. Well, that has nothing to do with the market. So what we're wanting to do, right, is to renegotiate contracts.
Yeah, I just thought we would.
Point of order, Russell, call for a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sure I know what the question is.
Did you discuss?
Then no second.
Yeah. A second.
Yeah, he did. Yeah, that's why he was discussing.
So it's, so we can cancel the current contract if that.
Well, we're in a contract.
At the end of the year?
Yeah, we want to go to a change, we're still on the contract with you guys, it's not, we're just doing a 30-day notice instead of a 90-day. And then we want to get it on our organization yearly, so we'll have it on there. And it would be included in our budget regardless, because we're doing it anyway, it's in there. So it'd just change instead of 90 days, it'd be 30 days.
So we're giving them notice of.
Yeah.
So for your current contract, December 1st would be starting your notice period for your current contract.
Yes.
So what I will do is I will provide you a updated contract for you to review that has the 30-day language in it for an automatic renewal with a 30-day notice instead of a 90. And then you can discuss it at your budget meeting.
Yes.
For next year.
Correct.
And then we can go through the other discussions.
Yeah, that's perfect.
And in that contract, it will say, any previous contract is not employed with the signing of that.
Yeah, but this one's not going to end until March 1st.
March 1st, correct. Or February 20th.
Yes.
And I did have one question, the president did mention before Mr. Johnson chimed in that we don't want this, we don't.
We what? I didn't say we. What I mean is.
You did say we, but my point is, the discussions outside these meetings need to stop. We need to have the discussions in public.
No, no, this is, what we're discussing here is what we're discussing here. We're not going to go back and forth. I call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Thank you, Alexis.
You're welcome.
I told Mr.
Jeff, you want to, yeah, we turn the comprehensive land use survey over to Mr. Johnson, please.
As most of you know, we're going through a comprehensive land use study, and the people that are in this audience are on that panel, and they've discussed questionnaire, survey mailer out. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize up to $3,300 to mail to Edna Township, 2022 community survey to the Edna Township landowners, also including the same motion, trustee comments to be limited to three minutes upon any second of this motion.
Point of order, you cannot limit comments in that manner. Point of order, you cannot limit comments in that manner, comments, per Roberts rules forty-three dash eight require ten minutes of debate, and you're not seconding it. Why, point of order, so if this is the chair, then I roll.
It's got to be two separate motions, one to change the rules, one to...
Oh, sorry, you're ordering the meeting?
No.
Why not? Everyone else is at order.
Point, I made a point of order to the chair.
Please, two separate motions.
Please.
Steve, I ask, please stop. I'm asking you to not...
I'm asking you to.
Check him out.
Another clown show.
Is the chair going to address my point of order?
Can you repeat yourself?
Yes, I made a point of order stating that that was out of order for Roberts rules as the ten minutes of debate is required for forty-three, oh, or forty-three dash eight.
Let me just say this to you, when you talk about Roberts rules, we can adopt Roberts rules, and we have adopted Roberts rules, but if we have a, a motion to stay under three minutes, and the board adapts that, then that's what we go by. That's for discussion. We can go ten minutes, we could go for five minutes, we could go for three minutes.
Point of order, the chair is not ruling on the point of order.
So just let you make, make sure that you know that.
Again, point of order, the chair is not addressing the point of order.
Is the President McKee appropriate?
Yes, sir.
I think at this, at this point in...
Can I shut your mouth?
At this point in time, you're looking, trustee Johnson's looking for a second if this is going to continue.
McKee gave the nod.
Definitely call the Lakewood County Sheriff's Office. So if the president decides that somebody's to be removed from this meeting here, they will get a criminal charge for disruption of a legal meeting. I want it understood at that point, okay? Going forward, if there's any public outbursts, and the president decides somebody's to be removed, they will be receiving a criminal charge.
I believe that's out of order. The back row's been out of order for most of this meeting, nothing said. To give a nod.
She's getting a nod.
So I, I made a, I made a point of order which the chair is not yet addressed. We have Roberts rules. It should be followed.
Mr. Evans, could you go ahead and repeat yourself, please?
If you're not going to address it, you're not going to address it, but the next step is a second to move the motion forward to a vote in the three minutes of comments, discussion by individual trustees, and then my recommendation would be to move it forward, and we can follow up as necessary after the meeting.
I believe a point of order must be addressed at the time it is raised.
President McKee, I don't believe one individual can make the rules that everybody else has to play by.
Exactly.
This is Roberts rules, not Rosson's rules. Point of order, the chair is not addressing the point of order. He requires the chair to make a ruling.
Jeff, could you repeat your chair? Could you please repeat?
Move to authorize up to thirty-three hundred dollars to mail to Ettnet Township, twenty-twenty-two community survey to the Ettnet Township residents, or landowners, I'm sorry, landowners. Also include in the same motion that trustee comments be limited to three minutes.
I'll second.
Second.
Again, point of order, Roberts rules forty-three dash oh eight does not proper.
Now, so...
Discussion?
Survey, or the survey sheet, if you haven't seen it, it's in your packet, I believe you guys have a copy?
Yes.
All right? This is what's going to be sent to them in a postcard form, they can, it's going to be a little scan code, those who want to sit, they can scan, they can go to the website, they can complete the survey at that point.
So, um, these will get mailed out like this?
Mm-hmm.
And then, or you guys want to have additional cards, like little small cards that you may sit around, like different places around the township, or just you just want to...
No, this is...
Strictly going out?
This is the mail.
Okay.
There are checks and balances that make sure it isn't so-called stuffing the ballot box.
Oh, okay.
So that won't, it was designed and decided to do it just to landowners, so with landowners, there's multiple names on an address thing, you don't get one survey mailed to it, so we're not wasting money.
Oh, so one per house, huh?
Yeah, we're not wasting money, it's because there's, you know, for people living in a house, they don't get three or four, and we just get one, and they can scan the codes. The codes are going to be the same, but it's the same form as all of them, it's not different. Everybody gets the same one.
How soon will we get, try and get these out?
As soon as we can. As soon as we can, so we're prepared to, to get them out, and get that process started.
Do have several comments on this, when to get this out, this should have been out months ago. Mr. Leonard right here is going to try to wrap this up by January. Well, if, if he does, I, I mean, we're delayed already, so, okay, that's fine. Twenty-twenty-two community survey, shouldn't we say more than community survey, this is about the comprehensive plan, about our future development, something, so people don't just toss this, it's not just a community survey, and I've got a question about all property owners, voters, visitors, and interested parties. We want visitors to tell us how we should develop our land. Another thing, I've heard the discussion that you want to include the Reynoldsburg annex areas, they can't vote in a referendum, they can't vote on our zoning. Why would we include them? They, they're in Reynoldsburg, just because the boundaries weren't conformed doesn't mean that they, they should still dictate what we're doing, because would they really care? So it should be to the unincorporated areas, the, the website address at the bottom is the entire length of it, I think we should have a tiny URL, so someone can go to it quickly, but should put a copy of the survey on the website, says just come in first in the township for it. And why aren't the business owners included on here? Because it should be business owners and residents of the unincorporated area. And I'm not sure how this is going to be asked, but a lot of people have Reynoldsburg zip code, Taskler zip code, I ran into it when I was collecting those, over five hundred signatures.
Three minutes, Mark.
No, I got it started when you guys were talking.
Well, I'm just saying, because, and the reason I was going to stop it...
No, but I'm still speaking, that was when you guys were running, that time just continued.
I'm just telling you that if you're not on the, you're not on the group, and ask anybody out here in the group, they decided to do this. I didn't decide to do it, she didn't decide to do it.
Okay.
The group decided, and I went with the group's decision on it. I didn't alter it, I didn't change it, so to all these people that are sitting in the audience that are in that group, you're telling them they didn't do it right. I'm going to arrest that.
I've asked them if they've seen it, and they said no. So we have a member of the group here that can quickly...
Several, there are several out there.
Address it, but I do have a question about the cost too, because the cost of this is sixty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, it's three times what St. Albans was being charged.
What's that got to do with this?
Why wasn't this, why wasn't that costing, supposed to be included in it?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Mrs. Burkhard, please.
Gary Burkholder, two-five-four Trail East, I do serve on that committee, I agree that these are legitimate questions. This should have, in fact, the, the group said this should have gone out several months ago, and there's been a delay because of the vendor that was supposed to put this together. We were originally told it would cost about a thousand, now it's thirty-eight hundred. But the point I want to make is, during our discussion, just this, the previous Wednesday, we talked about just sending it, and I raised the question, why is it going to the incorporated area, but we talked, we were told it was going just to the landowners. If it's saying visitors, people who work here and outside, then they've expanded that mailing beyond, and I think that the language, I'm not seeing the language, but I think the language needs to be changed, because the reason we didn't have that survey sooner for the group to approve is because Mr. Leonard said his vendor couldn't put it together for him, he did it to us. So I, I think it might be a little refinement, but, but I feel pretty strongly, it was said they thought they could wrap this up by the end of the year. This survey, this input should have been months ago, so that the whole group could consider the analysis of it, and the analysis, that's just the mailing. Does that include the analysis that supposedly Denton University is going to do on it? Because there is going to be some statistical analysis of this for consideration by the group, so I appreciate the opportunity to clarify the reality, and I never knew it was going to visitors too, so from a methodological standpoint, how are you going to control that? I thought, we were told at the last meeting, it is just going to the landowners.
Can I ask a question, Ralph, just a second? Can you, because we're organizing it, do you know it's supposed to be both ways, or is it one way? Is it just mailing to the resident, or is there going to be return?
My understanding that it would be just a notification that if you want to participate in a survey regarding land use, and the land use plan, that there'd be that code or the website, and that it would be an online survey. Now, Mr. Johnson, if I'm incorrect, I mean, was that your, that was my understanding that we had, right. So it'll only be an online survey, but it's basically a notification that if, in this case, the landowners, there was a discussion about, what about the people that rent? What about all the apartments we have? What about the condos, those things? But at the end of the day, we were kind of told what it was going to be, it was going to be the landowners, and we were given a quote at that meeting, and Mr. Johnson's now brought it before the board. So it's not going to be, at least, I don't think there's going to be any hard copies, I think you either get online and participate, or...
Other than the ones mailed. Well, this does say you could pull it out at the township, I mean, that's our copy, and don't we want to support those that maybe aren't online?
Well, that's why I was asking, where are you guys going to place some copies, cards with the scan drawn, and I think you guys mentioned one time having that apartments or...
Well, we did.
On the, there, at renters? Was that something you guys had said, something about it one time?
Well, there've been two, there's been, you know, this, this came up early on, that we wanted to mail out a notification with the trash bills.
Right.
And we missed, we missed that window, so I'm a little surprised that it's this late in the process, but I don't know if it was definitively, and I'll rely on the other members that serve on the committee that are here tonight, I don't know if there are going to be extra copies, I, I don't recall, Mr. Johnson, are there going to be hard copies too, in addition to the...
Access the website.
Just the website, apparently, yes.
Mr. Burkholder? Maybe it'd be good for the group to ask the printer for overruns and the cost of what those overruns are, because they often will do two-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred overruns for a project that aren't addressed.
The idea was that we don't want to sit around and waste a meeting inputting all this stuff, or people getting together and putting it all into the system from a hard copy, all results. This is automatic tabulation when you get to the site, so you can do any kind of sorting or anything without having to put all this information in by hand, that's the way they present it.
I believe that's correct, yes.
But if you don't have internet, phone, it's all the...
Let me just add, let me... Everybody has a phone, doesn't have a phone, I mean... Let me just add one thing, one point that I made early on when we were talking about this, this is not a scientific survey, because you would have sampling, and those are very expensive to do, I used to do that at the university, but it, it is an opportunity for people to weigh in, so while it's not scientific, it should give us a pretty good idea of those that choose, and not everyone's going to participate, to get some kind of sense of how the community feels, how they want to see it developed, one of their top concerns here is the traffic, is its sense of community, and so, and if I may, when you look at a framework and what they're doing, they're reaching out to the whole county as well, and so it may not be scientific, but you want some feedback to find out where the community stands regarding our future land use, so, while it's not perfect, you know, I hope, I encourage everyone that can to get online and participate once this goes out, but I will say, I think we're going to need more time at the end of the year to wrap this whole land use plan up, so that the committee, the steering committee, and of course it'll come to the board then, will have an opportunity to actually look at the data. Personally, one of my greatest concerns is, what are the housing trends saying about the types of housing, how much housing is going to be needed in this area? And obviously, and I'm glad we have representatives from the school district, that's a major issue, and in fact, there was a meeting this morning talking about that, that possibly over the next ten years, the projections are we could add twenty-five-hundred students to the Southwest Lincoln School District. So that kind of data, I would request that we, the committee, have enough time to have some in-depth discussions on that, and not rush this to the final product.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to add one too, so...
Thank you, Shelley Marie E. Pach, Preserve Oils. I'm on the CAC too, I'm going to keep my comment, just limited to what you were just talking about with the postcard. So I, I can assure you, the board's, well, we all agree, we're behind, we need a hurry, but we spent a lot of time going over the questions, we chewed on that thing like a bad piece of meat. And we discussed it, and as I remember, if I remember correctly, the, like you said, there's apps, you know, we're invited all these groups to weigh in, but when the data is compiled, sorted out, they're going to be able to look at who's the visitor, who's the business, they're going to be able to sort it out, so essentially, if I understand correctly, it's going to take the economic development pulse of Ettnet Township, and then they're going to use specialized categories, answers, and they went so far even to look at the different zip codes, and we pulled up how to actually sort the zip codes and find out who is incorporated, who is unincorporated, some zip codes span different things, so, and Jim said, yes, that's, we will be able to do that when we analyze the data, so you will be able to sort out specifically what you want to look at, but you'll still have everything over here that you can refer to or reference later, if I understand correctly. So, yes, the vendor was behind, but we weren't even ready, we were still going over this and kind of affirmed it by our last meeting, so we did, we did our best, but it is what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just still don't understand why we're sending it to the incorporated areas, it would reduce the cost, and again, the direction we go in should be the residents that live here in the unincorporated areas.
Mr. Steen, you have anything on this, on the survey?
So as previously spoken to, yeah, we, we definitely chewed over this a lot, okay? That's why we have a subcommittee or a, or a group to do this. Personally, once it comes to this board, it should be a matter of whether approved the mailer or not, rather than rehash everything that the committee has done thusforth. That's why you have us, so, you know, I am a little concerned that it doesn't seem to necessarily be exactly what we looked at on Wednesday, I'd have to go back and look at the official proceedings to do that, but I would suggest, if you're going to question what went on in those proceedings, they were videotaped as well, go back and look at them, if there's questions as to whether what you're presented with is actually what we said. So at that point, really, the only thing that I was left with a question with under leaving the meeting Wednesday, was that simply the approval to send out the mailer, not to completely go through every ounce of text that's on the mailer, this, that, and the other, that's why we have a consultant to go through that stuff for us, so I really don't see the point in taking up meeting time to go through those things all over again, without the benefit of the committee being here to go through it, that's why committee seven minutes, thanks.
Ms. Alicia, you got anything on the survey that you could share?
They pretty much covered all of it.
Okay.
I mean, they really have. It took longer than expected, by frankly.
Mr. Black, anything?
The...
Mr. Black?
Yeah, Mr. Black. You got junior on again?
I think when you receive anything in the mail, you have your zip code behind it, you have four digits.
Yeah.
Those four digits are going to be the code that you have to enter, as I understand it. And that distinguishes exactly all the breakdown that we're talking about.
Okay.
So that's built in, and that's part of...
So that's built in and that's part of, and it may not be those four digits, but there's a code in the county register of every property owner, every mailing address, and that code can be separated into all the different categories. Landowners, whether they're part of Reynoldsburg, part of whatever, whatever. There's some zip codes in Potasko, some in Netna, some in Reynoldsburg, so on and so forth. So that's part of the database that they're going to be pulling from to use the mailers so that way they have control over everything and break it down any way you want. That's my understanding.
My guess, concerning what's on this particular information sheet, it was my understanding last week, we were talking only about property owners. That's why it was Mr. Leonard that said, "We're not using voter rolls. We're using tax-based property owners as the, as the recipients of this."
For the mailer, correct.
And so some of this needs to be taken off of here because voters, visitors, interested parties, little, little too, too much. At one point, this was several months ago at the meeting, I suggested that we actually have an open house here and have the people that are serving on the committee, some of them, to be here to answer questions if someone has some interest in what's going on and if they want to fill out a hard copy form at that point. And sometimes things get overlooked and dismissed and I was dismissed, but I still think it's a good idea, you know, that we have, that we use this taxpayer-funded place facility and offer an opportunity for our residents, if they want to come here and ask questions, they should be able to do that.
On that real quickly, couldn't we have an open house and have them enter electronically here on a pad, some laptop? I mean, that'll stop any...
I believe that the availability was there for somebody to come to the township office and serve if they want to do.
Oh, so that's their...
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, they have to electronically submit it because none of these are going to be, none of these are going to be jotted down tight, as far as I understand. But it'd be my recommendation that if you're not willing to move forward with the mailer, that you table it till the next meeting when we can, and address those questions to Mr. Leonard, you know, or get a chance to review the video of the last meeting or whatever. Because off the top of my head, I don't have a copy in my head exactly what was up on the screen as far as what was handed out prior to the meeting here, as far as what it was. But I do know that there was nothing there that was found to be objectionable at the end of that meeting. It was simply that, okay, it's time to send the survey out. And it was to use the property designators so that we would know when they reply back that they, the person submitting the survey was either a member of Reynoldsburg or the unincorporated portions of the township. And so that we would have, that would actually be baked into the survey. So in other words, the postcard as it went out would include the suffix for anywhere it was mailed. And so when they're asked the survey, they input that code. What's the code on the front that you received on the front? That way we know it came from somebody that was within Reynoldsburg because if it was 113 or 114, I don't remember those numbers, then they input that when they start the survey so we can then parse that information. Does that match your regulations yet?
Yeah, you could run, sort, a lot of them, a million different ways once the information's in. So we're just trying to use this to get information in on the survey.
Right.
And then we can use it to sort what we need out of it.
I just want to point out, it's, it's a complex thing that we spend a lot of time talking about and it's really hard to try and digest it with, you know, at least two folks that weren't here or that weren't there will be discussing. So I mean, it's, it's one of those things where, you know, if you want to table it until you can discuss with the, with Mr. Leonard as far as what the actual context that is, the way I look at it is that's why we have the subcommittee in the first place to do that. And that was our recommendation moving forward.
President McKee, whenever appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, I think at this point in time it's more of a financial question for the board of trustees. It sounds like there's a sense of urgency and I believe, it's my understanding at least, that this board of trustees is putting its, its confidence in the CAC to do its job. And its job in this case is to create that survey. So a motion of not to exceed potentially could keep things moving forward with the CAC can make sure that everything that should be in that survey is in that survey and the funding has been supported by the board of trustees.
Point of order, there's already a motion and so we don't need another motion. But I would, I would recommend that we do this, but my questions were based on my conversations with those in the CAC, that that was different than what was discussed. So that's why I brought that up. We should approve this and let them sort out any changes needed, but with the urgency, yes, this should have been done months ago, so we shouldn't delay another meeting.
Right, right. Mr. Black, please.
This will be quick.
Sure.
There is one other piece that maybe will be helpful to put, put things at rest. Within the survey are four or five questions that specifically identify the person taking the survey. Where do they live? Are they a visitor? Are they a landowner? Are they a homeowner or whatever? That's built into the survey. In addition, you've got the code to which you referred. So we should have a complete ability to separate out different opinions. And part of the reason for including visitors in that description is people that work at, might be considering moving to this township, things like that, could be part of the survey that be identified as visitors, but we still would value their opinion. That doesn't mean it would be the, something going to be overriding and they couldn't, you couldn't have somebody fill it out 50 times, 60 times, something like that, and we'd be able to identify them.
And you can extract them.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were aware, it was discussed quite a bit. It was also time, time constraints of when people would be on vacation, to get back.
You guys really...
We put a lot of thought into it, but we did the time to get it out and get it done. So, you know, mail, holidays, it was all...
Yes, okay, thank you. So we just need to try to...
Yeah.
So call for the question?
So are we...
You want to... Hear the motion for the 30, up to $3,300?
But it sounds like you're going to need overruns maybe and postage might vary. So I'm just wondering if you want to up it or change the 3,300 to allow some leeway?
Would you amend my motion to make it 3,500?
You can revise your motion.
Didn't Leonard, Leonard say that the 3,300 was based on possible like double occupancy and that, so it would actually be less?
I think it's already increased.
And, and then again, if there are overruns, whatever, you have that authority to, for the increase. No, we approved that.
Well, I made my motion to make it $5,000.
3,300?
3,300?
That's what you say.
I know, I made my motion to make it $4,000, up to $1,000.
I thought you said 5.
Oh, did I say 5? Sorry.
That's not to exceed.
I heard 5.
Not to exceed 4,000.
Not to exceed 4,000?
Call for a question?
You need a sec.
I'll say...
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Do you need a motion on the, do you need a roll call motion as amended?
Oh, we broke off, so I've called for the question as amended.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I'm going to move on to Fran E. Bragg's memorial. Mr. Bragg's brother was called, actually sent a few emails out to the board last week and I responded to him. And I don't, I don't think he knew that the, what was it, the footer was poured over at the park. He's planning on putting a memorial at our park across the year. And I know he's been working hard and diligently with a company to come out and pour the footer so he can lay the stone on top of it. As of today, it's not been poured. So I had a conversation with him and he's willing to wait till the first of the year because the weather's getting colder and can't pour then. So I just wanted to bring that to our attention, that he still wants to do the memorial for his brother, but wants to move it to the first part of the year when we start pouring into a warmer weather. So next year is when he wants to pour the footer.
And he also asked for a small dedication ceremony.
A small dedication ceremony.
I'm willing to participate in that, I hope the board does because I think it's important.
Absolutely, I'd be glad to.
Mr. Bragg?
Yes.
And all was small.
Yep.
It's all having that. I'm going to do consideration, safe routes to schools resolution. I would like to turn it over to Mr. Vance, please.
Very quickly, this is just a resolution that formally identifies the board trustee's commitment to move forward with a planning grant application for safe routes to school, school grant funds in the future. This is the first step in that process. It's a $25,000, 100% grant and Mr. Leonard is helping us with this application.
I move to approve resolution to apply for the safe routes to school projects through the State of Ohio Department of Transportation noting in section one of four, authorizing myself, Rosalind McKee to execute on behalf of the township. In section two, total cost of projecting is estimated to be $25,000 as presented. I also include in this same motion, the trustee comments be limited to three minutes upon a second to the motion being received that would allow description per 4315 of August Rule of Order. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Has our legal counsel reviewed this resolution? I'm requesting information. Has our legal counsel reviewed this resolution? Mr. Vance, has our legal counsel reviewed?
President McKee, my understanding is this is a resolution that originated with DOT, but we can absolutely verify that. It is to their liking, we can make sure the prosecutor takes a look before we submit the application with the, with the resolution.
That's what, that's what our plan is.
There, there's a title, the date's incorrect at the top and there's also a reference to this resolution's hereby declared to be an emergency measure and to be enforced immediately upon its passage. That's not typically in our resolutions. And one of the portions I'm concerned about is the LPA, which is at Annapolis Township here, agrees to pay 100% of the cost over and above the maximum amount provided by the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. What, what is the maximum amount? What, what are we, Mr. Vance, I'm speaking, please. What is the maximum amount because we're going to stay consistent is with the OPWC application, this board wanted specifics and this seems like it's a kind of an open, open-ended deal here.
President McKee?
Sir?
If this board would like to have a $50,000 planning process, they're basically stating that you're free to spend more than $25,000 as long as you spend your own money. That's my understanding.
Right, but this resolution authorizes Ms. McKee to enter into any contracts and at her sole discretion to, to exceed those. So she could enter in a contract for 200,000, 300,000. So that, that was my concern, that I would, I moved to amend the resolution to put a total cost of no more than $30,000. And that includes the $25,000 grant, so 5,000 overrun, 20%.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but why, why are you going to 5,000 extra money?
To have some, is there some other limit that you want to place on this? Otherwise, like I said, it's open-ended where you could, one, one board member who's appointing herself as the person to do it could agree to any amount. And I think it is fiscally responsible to have some, some limit.
I don't have a problem. I think that is right. That is exactly right. That's how we should do it.
And that, that's... Are you comfortable, are you comfortable with $30,000?
Well...
I mean, because you're saying 25 in this one and we have to pay...
I mean, I've got an estimate...
You can always come back in.
I've got an entire active transportation estimate for the entire township for 42,000.
Yeah, 42,000.
So if you can't, if this can't be done for under 30, I have to question because the other included identifying those safe routes to schools within that.
It's over. Because I know we had discussed it, yeah.
President McKee, I believe...
And if it exceeds it, we just need more action.
I think, right. My recommendation would be start with 100%, $25,000. If the president or another trustee feels that additional planning is necessary in coordination with school, then come back and seek some additional funds. At that point in time, have a vote, but I don't see anything in here that allows board trustee to have a blank check, basically.
Right.
It states in section one, hereby authorizes the president, Rosalind McKee, to prepare and execute on behalf of the LPA at Annapolis Township defecation for the funds described in. So it's authorized, that's what I'm saying.
It's back to, it's the $2,500.
Thousand.
$25,000, sorry.
So we want to keep it?
Yeah.
You want to keep it 25, do you think we need the 30? Well, I'm just saying, the language afterwards allows for any amount of...
Let's, let's keep it at 25,000 and that's what, that's what we are.
And removing that other language.
So if we need to add later on, we can bring it back to the board and ask, so I'm not...
So I'll, I'll...
It should be.
I'll withdraw. Okay, well, I'll move for amendment to remove the language of the cost over and above the maximum amount provided. All right, I don't move my, don't you have to remove my second though from your amendment?
Is that correct, Mark?
Well, I amended the amendment, so.
You amended the amendment, so you need a second on the amendment then.
Right.
I remove my second from your...
I don't think...
From your amendment, okay? All right, you remove your amendment and then we go back to this and then you can make your amendment.
All right, I don't think we could remove a second after that, but I'll move to amend to remove the language authorizing the additional cost over and above the maximum amount provided by the State of Ohio Department of Transportation. There are seconds. I'll second.
So I'll make a motion to...
Do you need a roll call?
I'm sorry, roll call.
You amended it, right?
No, we already did that, so roll...
You have to roll call, it isn't amendment.
You just made an amendment on it.
So roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Now call the question, I know...
You have to make a motion, you have to roll call the motion as amended.
The motion that was amended, I'd like to make a motion for that, so call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
So we'll move over to the old business tonight, AEP easement. The AEP easement contract has went back and forth between AEP and prosecutor's office about three times. What you have in front of you now is what has been approved by the prosecutor and also by AEP's attorneys. And we just need a motion on this tonight. And then once, once the motion is approved it, then we need three originals signed and authorized to go to AEP when it stays here. And then there's also the easement payment agreement that they'll, they will disperse the funds to the township within 30 days of receipt of this executed agreement, once
I move to approve the easement and right-of-way agreement between AEP and Annapolis Township and the easement payment agreement in the amount of $2,380 as presented. I also include in this same motion that the trustee comments be limited to three minutes upon any second to this motion being received. upon any second to this motion being received that would allow for discussion per 4315 of Robert's Rules of Order. Is there a second?
I'll second. And so I'm disbelief of how you want to limit discussion on these items, but my, my question on this is, does this affect in any way the possible use of the park? Especially considering that we don't have the Langle property that connects these, the east and the west sections. Uh, this is going, seems like going right through our property. So if we don't get the Langle property, will this affect the use and design on this portion?
No, it won't. That's one of the things that was put into this was, uh, this came from the prosecutor's Basically it gives the township right to access over top of it with drives, walkways, whatever in that area without having to come back to AEP for any kind of written approval.
And if, if they need to do maintenance repair, are they responsible for returning any of that pavement sidewalks and that to its original condition?
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's fine.
They, um, there were also, one of the other changes from the beginning to now is there's going to be two, uh, two boxes where they're going to come up to where we can connect into a road or a lawn.
Is that in agreement here?
No, it's just a.
Okay. All right, I didn't say that. That's what I was looking for, I didn't say it.
They gotta come up because they gotta, they can only run so much water, wire, so there's only the two junctions for us.
Do I need my three minutes?
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Okay, hold on, we'll go to the fiscal officer report. Motion to approve check register as submitted by the fiscal officer. Is there a second?
I'll second. I reviewed it earlier, everything's in order. Thank you, Drew.
Did you finish looking through yours yet?
Yes.
Yeah?
I believe the check register was in the folder.
Yeah, yeah. I was.
Normally they, they serve it, I think, I think the summary.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Resolution to approve purchase orders. Is there a second?
That's the one that she said she wouldn't need.
Oh, you don't need that tonight? Okay, motion to ratify the payment of the above listed bills for November as shown in the payment listing.
Can you see that? That was in that.
That was in the folder.
Yeah.
Is it still laying up there?
I can't.
Oh, you got the folder? No, you're, you're.
It's a lot.
Oh, there it is. That's, that's a.
Is there a second?
I'll second. That's this one, correct?
Yeah.
The big, repaid.
Call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Did you have anything else, Drew?
Um, yeah, I, I prepared and put on your podium is the fund summaries of all the accounts as of the end of October. Uh, year's state revenue at October 31st was 4.6 million. We've had year's state expenditures of 2.7 million. And I'm still estimating, uh, unencumbered fund balance carryover of $4 million. Um, and then I have a couple of other items that just came to my attention recently that we probably should discuss and have on a readout before the next meeting. And that is the potassium bank CD that we have. It matures on November 23rd. It auto-renews for one year and we have a 10-day grace period. Um, I'm recommending that we withdraw most funds and put them in an account that has more interest. Um, it could be transferred to the money market account, or the Star Ohio account, or the county account, um, whatever is the board's pleasure, but it's $257,000 in there currently and it's only making $21 a month in interest.
What would be the recommendation?
I think we should transfer it to the checking account, which then can be invested in the Star Ohio account.
Is that the one that El Tama recommends?
I think we should definitely do that before that, the time where it auto-renews to give us some time.
So since we have a 10-day grace period from November 23rd, we need to obviously do it before December 3rd, which will, well, actually, no, I'm wrong. December 6th is the first maybe.
We should just.
I could call another account.
You need, you don't have a motion for us to do that, do you?
I did, to transfer the funds. So I'll, I'll make a motion to allow our fiscal officer to transfer the funds that are within the potassium bank in the amount of approximately $257,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, move it to.
The general, the general public's account to be reimbursed into the Star Ohio account.
What she's saying.
Or we could just transfer it to the money market account, which, whatever.
Well, can we do it to general funds? And then if we want to decide to do something after, then we can, with the Star Ohio. It's not locked in there, right?
Yeah, it's not. It can be.
So why don't we do that and then if there's any better investments, any versus money market, at least it gives us time. We get it out and it'll be for auto-renews.
And auto-renews?
The 23rd, within 10-day period, so it's.
So can you take the motion for me?
So I, I make a motion for the fiscal officer to transfer the funds in the potassium bank in the amount of approximately $257,000 to the general funds of our Star Ohio account.
No, it's got to go to the general public.
General public. I'll second that. So hold $21, please make me.
It hasn't changed. The streets are up.
We call, call for the question.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Okay, so, um, beginning of October, we got the notice from, um, what was it? Days, day funeral services, the request to pay for the cremation of the indigenous, what was I saying wrong? Person in Edna Township. I emailed a couple times, but I don't know where that's at.
So, well, um, just to let you know that this company, um, we've, we've talked to, um, the prosecutor, I've talked to them, and I've also talked to OTA, just to see how they were dealing with it from other townships. Um, got some documentations on it. And, um, there's some additional information that we've asked that we've never received from that company, which is like, okay, that person's supposed to live in this, in this property, we, we don't know that for sure. Looked it up online, didn't see them listed. Um, so we are still, we're investigating, figure out, um, as far as the funds are concerned, moving that money into a, um, basically we as a trustee, we, as a board, we would put the money into a particular, um, just a, I don't know what you want to say, we would put this money in for the indigenous every year. When somebody comes in that is, um, they can't pay for their burial, we would pay them and then we would apply for the money from the state to be reimbursed. But as a board or as a trustee, I mean, as a township, we would have to, um, prove to the state that this person was indigenous, they didn't have the funds, and they had no next of kin. And in order for us to do that, that would be the only way we would get reimbursed from this. So this same company has, I think about two or three years ago, they contacted the board about three years ago and tried to get money for the, for the same thing. Um, they put it down at the prosecutor's office, they responded, and they didn't feel that we should be paying that out unless they could actually prove to us that person was indigenous, they didn't have any family, or did they own the property, or, um, or they, um, resident of the township. So we have to have those questions answered before we get reimbursed. We can pay it, but we should be getting reimbursed from the state. Unless we can answer those questions, the state will not reimburse us for those funds.
Did you receive the rest of the reports from the day service with the property information and in the notarized, um, statement of indigency?
Let me see, because I've received several things.
We also only have so many days from the date of that he was cremated to get, to be able to get reimbursed from the state. And that will.
And is our.
Well, yeah, we got all of this, yeah, yeah. He didn't, yeah.
But it has a notarized and there's a.
We've contacted her and not heard back from them. This is on that indigenous, um, resident here.
And is our obligation different than the criteria to be reimbursed?
No, we, what we have to do is we would pay for it as a township. And then we would have to answer those, we have to prove to the state for them to reimburse us, but they're wanting us to pay it upfront and they get reimbursed.
Right, but my question is, do we have an obligation to pay for it separate from being reimbursed from the state?
No, no.
And that's what needs to be determined.
This is all the stuff is not, that's exactly right. Unless we can prove it, and we have not been able to prove that, and that's why the prosecutor got involved.
Drew, how long has this been outstanding?
I don't know what.
President McKee, if appropriate.
Mrs. Brown, when, um, this company contacted the township about two or three years ago for the same thing, and.
Prosecutor's office recommended that they prove that they met the poverty level and then you had reached out and had some forms that we were going to have to fill out.
Right, and they never did, and they never got back.
Yeah. From whatever happened.
So that's where we are. So like I said, they, they have to prove that.
And I would recall when you checked, when you checked on everything, there's only so much money in that fund, so it might not even be money left in there to pay the township back. In the state.
Yeah, I already had these papers that we, they're all sitting in my head.
So do you want me to reach out to the prosecutor?
You're more than welcome, if that's what you want to do, be more than welcome.
Well, I just, hopefully if there is money in the, you know, funeral directors program, then you can get the full $995,000 back, but there are stipulations that it has to be done.
That's correct.
Sixty days with, with October, uh, 4th or whatever was the date that he was cremated. So that's, that's until December to get it all done by. So I'd reach out to prosecutor's office and see if I can find out.
Okay, no problem.
What prosecutor were you speaking with on this matter? Just so she can contact, was it?
Mr. Altier, so you could talk to Austin, because Mr. Altier is off physically, so either one, it doesn't matter. Sure, he'll be able to, yeah. And Mr. Vance, do you have something to say? I'm sorry.
No, ma'am, I believe you covered it.
Okay.
I, I did have a question of, I know there's been some outstanding records requests, one of the people tonight.
Are you under comments, Mr. Evans?
It's under the.
Go to comments?
No, it's under the fiscal officer's.
Okay, report?
Report.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm asking for a report on the compliance with the records request. We just had a resident asking about it that it was not complied with. Are you aware of outstanding requests?
Yes.
Okay. With regard to. First of all, this is inappropriate for you to tell her what she needs to do. She, she's a fiscal officer, she doesn't have to speak up for herself. You continue to do that all the time. Let Mrs., uh, Mrs. Varian speak for herself.
And I have.
Thank you.
I have outstanding, I have outstanding records requests, yes, of all sorts, right now. I, with regard to the cameras that aren't recording anymore, with regard to documents that I need to get scanned and, um, requests that are never replied to, I don't know. And this is to be wonderful, but.
Boy, in compliance.
Yeah, and, and we're out, it's out of compliance, so, I mean, what are you going to say?
All right, thank you.
Announcement and trustee comments, please limit it to three minutes.
Anybody? All right, um, my comment is on November 29th, 6:00 PM, uh, we'll be hosting the Lincoln County Board of Development, uh, Development Disabilities here regarding the Tollgate House and then the future Palmer House with some, uh, some issues that they've been having. Again, uh, one of the, the kids got out, got hit, uh, so there's, there is concern about the neighbors and then also those in Russell Heights and New England Acres with the future one. Uh, just like to say, there was, uh, I think, uh, Kefmeyer brought up framework and so they were contacted the township and were responded to, that was Ms. McKee that was contacted and, uh, Ms. McKee chose not to respond. I think we did miss out on that.
That's not true.
I did, uh, excuse me, this is my time. Uh, regarding the purchases, again, I asked for Gen Z reimbursement. Uh, it's been blocked again. We won't even have discussion on this. There are needs of our road department. Uh, our, our equipment is rusting because we can't, we have a commercial residential power washer, not, not even hot water, not good gallons per minute, that, that, they were washing a million dollars worth of equipment with. And, uh, I proposed numerous times, uh, for this and the Gen Z paid for the truck. The Gen Z paid for those things. Why, why we can't even ask them for reimbursement? I, I should ask for the board to just pay for it, but I'm trying to be, uh, very mindful of our money, but I don't think this board would even pay for it. The equipment needed for our road through, we're down one. So the, this is equipment that's needed. I plan to be at the meeting this Friday, um, to ask again. It shouldn't be necessary. Uh, Ms. McKee, you, you appointed yourself, like I said, on and to that board.
You keep saying that and you know what?
But Ms. McKee, this is my time.
If we have to have a trustee on the board, would you want to be the, would you want to be a trustee on the board?
Ms. McKee, point of order, this is my time. Uh, regarding, uh, Ms. Murch, uh, discussion outside the meeting, yes, Ms., Mr. Johnson admitted at our January 18th meeting that that's what the board used to do. And I've had to stop the other members from doing that with me numerous times. Uh, it's inappropriate. All discussions should see the light of day in front of public. Fiscal assistant, uh, somebody brought that up, of, of fiscal officer, it's assistant, it's not replacing a fiscal officer.
It's a full-time position.
And, excuse me, and Ms. McKee, this is my, this is my time.
I understand, doesn't matter what it is.
And, um, the server, the DVR, where is that at? I've asked, residents have asked, that contains public records. That was removed without board action. One person decided that. Employees say it's not my, my thing. It's inappropriate.
John, do you have any comments?
No.
I don't have any comments. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee? Yes.